Noting the time and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. Welcome, everyone. Thank you to Acton TV for taping this meeting and providing it on their website, actontv.org. You want to go before the public participation?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Superintendent Light is going to make a few remarks.
So, I just wanted to quickly read a statement before we actually begin the meeting, because I think it's important to make sure everyone has the right information. You know, unfortunately today, one of our school buses was carrying one of our junior high school athletic teams, and that...
Yeah, it's on.
Yeah, it's on. And that bus was involved in a motor vehicle accident in Westford along with a motorcyclist. While all of our students and staff were safe, the accident did result in a tragic fatality to the motorcyclist. The accident is currently under investigation by the Massachusetts State Police and the Westford Police as well as the Middlesex County District Attorney's Office. We do not have any additional details about the incident at this time. Per our procedure, we have placed the driver on leave while the situation is being investigated. The school has been in communication with all of the families of students on the bus at the time of the accident. We will be making counseling and support services available to students and staff. We're deeply, deeply saddened by this news, and our hearts go out to not only the family of the motorcyclist, but the entire Westford community. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone had that information and is aware of that situation, because it developed late this afternoon, so, you know, we're really, really deeply troubled. It's impacted a lot of people, and we're very sad about that. So, thank you.
All right. This is the part of the meeting per policy BEDH. When members of the public may speak for up to two minutes on items not included on this agenda, comments regarding items on the agenda should be made during that part of the meeting. Typically, the committee administration will not respond to comments during public participation. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? All right. I'd like to invite our high school student representatives up to give their update.
I'm a senior at Acton Boxborough High School. Do you guys want to introduce yourselves?
Yeah, sure. Hi, everyone. I'm Justin Shan, and I'm a junior.
I'm Michael. I'm a senior. I've been here before.
So, this is going to be a little bit of a longer update, but so first, it has now been officially fourteen-day cycle in the school with the new schedule, and I've heard a lot of people are really starting to like it. I personally really like it. I think definitely people have adjusted to the change, and people really appreciate the drop one and meeting classes at different times of the day. It's just, I think it's overall really beneficial to everyone despite the controversy it, like, created in the high school when it was first presented. Second, I'm talking about the Powderpuff game that Student Council is running. I'm actually the official videographer for it, so that's fun. But it seems like it's going to be a really big success. Right now, Student Council, we're trying to get people to be more excited to actually go watch instead of participate in it. But we're selling tickets next week, and practices start this weekend for the teams, and I think everyone's getting really excited for that, and it's going to be a good fundraising event for Student Council, so yeah.
All right. So I'm going to talk to all of you guys about the Activities Fair. So we had the Activities Fair last Thursday and Friday in East Commons during all lunch blocks, and I was there on Friday, and from what I saw, it was a very large success. The hallways were bustling with activity. Kids were just signing up for all kinds of clubs. Personally, I run, I ran the table for the Science Olympiad Club, and we are a pretty large club. We had around fifty members to begin with, and we increased our participation by around thirty percent after this, this meeting, so that was really interesting and nice to see. And yeah, that's about it. I think that the Activities Fair is a pretty big success this year, and that most clubs are having their first meetings around this week or the next week, so participation's going up.
So I'd just like to note that between this meeting and the last one, you have now seen all five of your representative student reps from the high school, and I think they did a great job for the first time. And so going into the past two weeks, just on Tuesday, we had Parent Night for college, application, admission, et cetera, and this week, councilors met with seniors during English class periods to go over the expectations for that process. And lastly, I'd also like to mention that there seems to be, I didn't know about this before today, but there seem to be a lot of students that are interested in the climate strike that's happening tomorrow in Bosnia. I'm not completely certain, but I believe this is a nationwide coordinated event, and that actually got me thinking that, it's interesting to me that we don't have a specific student protest policy. We allude to it in policy J.I., where we promote free inquiry and expression, but maybe this committee might be interested in looking into a subchapter specifically outlining student protest, because there's obviously some issues with, be it safety or preserving the rights of those who do not wish to participate. And I don't think that would apply to tomorrow specifically, because honestly, you just, the school marks the mass incident, that'll be that. But for example, with the March For Our Lives thing, that was, I believe, my sophomore year, so a year and a half ago. I think something like that, it might actually be really beneficial to have a policy at the district level that lays out for secondary students what the expectations are and how, what the procedures are for preserving student safety and preserving the rights of the students to learn in a positive environment, and also that is in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter Seventy-One, Section Eighty-Two, around preserving student freedom of expression. Thank you. So, John?
Thanks. So let me just, first of all, briefly comment that, you know, it's fantastic when this student feedback comes with specific requests and proposals, you know, that of course we can either decide our grade or maybe need some improvement, so that's good, and I should have said the same thing last time when Charlie spoke. So kudos to everybody for coming, not only with a concern, but with some action to be taken. And then, this is a little bit more open-ended question, so feel free to take a cut at it now, or if you'd like to come back and take a cut at it, that's fine. So I've heard that we are not at a loss for creating clubs, that we have a creative student body, we could create literally millions of clubs. And so from the perspective of the students, and you were just through the fair, you know, are we doing a good job of trying to, you know, make the things that we do elect to offer high quality enough, or are we maybe having too many activities and that's sort of diluting the effort?
I think the amount of activities that people, that people have the option of participating in is like perfect. Also, I know people are well aware that if there's nothing that really appeals to them, they can create something themselves. I, one of my friends last year created the Scooter Club, and they just scooter, and I think it's like a good amount of clubs and nothing overwhelming, nothing too limiting, so yeah.
At the same time, I guess, off the cuff, I guess I would point out that there is a process for producing these clubs, or acquire an educational or like mission that would support the learning of students, and that mostly, if a club doesn't have a lot of members, it usually dies out by a year, maybe two, if they're really persistent. So I guess it sort of self-regulates in a sense, and by the end of the day, I think you do have a variety of clubs that people are interested in.
Yeah, I'm also in agree, like, I'm also agreeing with the current policy, because while we have this, we have this nice balance right now between students being able to, like, run up and come up with their own ideas about clubs, but you also, going through the process of creating a club, you also need to find like a teacher as an advisor. So you'd actually need to convince them that this is like a worthwhile club to have, and that, that just makes sure, that regulates that we don't have just clubs popping out of nowhere and maintains the higher quality of our clubs at school.
Thank you, guys. That was great. Thank you. That was great. All right. So now Peter's going to give his update.
All right. So I have a few different updates for you, and this is on your table, and then as usual, this will be sent out to our entire school community tomorrow. First, I'm pleased to announce that Tessa and I will be hosting our first coffees with the community. The purpose of the coffees is to give the two of us a chance to hear from our families and community members about their perceptions of our schools, answer questions that are on their minds, and provide a venue for two-way communication with our stakeholders. The first two events of the year are going to be held Friday, October 11th, from eight o'clock to nine-thirty a.m., and again on November 15th, which is a Friday, from eight o'clock to nine-thirty a.m. The events right now are being held in the administration building, in the auditorium there, which will be newly finished for those coffees. So we're excited about that. I think going into this year, I thought, what, one of the really important things we can do is find ways to continue to connect with stakeholders and make sure that we provide a venue for feedback, so that we hear what's on people's minds, answer questions, and make sure people know what's happening across the district. So this is really the beginning of that effort. Second update, we are also excited to announce, Dr. Bentley and I are actually co-leading a family and community advisory group on the district's work around diversity, equity, and inclusion. We're currently seeking members of our family network and broader community who represent the diversity of our district to serve in this important group. We will be sending out more information in the coming days with information about getting involved in the opportunity. We have scheduled our first meeting for Thursday, October 24th, from six-thirty to eight-thirty p.m. We're looking forward to hearing more from our families and community as we expand our work around inclusive schools. I also want to let you know that Dawn and I are also talking, and we're in the process of forming similar focus groups for students throughout the year, so that students have an opportunity to talk directly to Dawn and I at the district level about their perceptions around diversity, equity, and kind of inclusive cultures in our schools. So more to come on that as the year goes on. I'm excited to report back to you as we get going. I also included a link in this. There was a really nice article in the Boston Globe, it was last week, regarding the opening girls swim team meet during the season opener, the team-honored coach Jeff Johnson, who, as you know, had passed away very suddenly last year. He had had a tremendous impact on countless young athletes throughout his long and dedicated career, so I wanted to put that link in so that you could see the article, and also families, if they didn't get to see it in the Globe, could also take a look at that. Kind of continuing with some professional learning for leaders around our district, I wanted to give you a little information, but on October 24th, we are sending a team of our district leaders to a conference sponsored, it actually should say DESI, not DESI with a W, on, and it is on leading with access and equity. They call it a convening, but the purpose of the conference is to bring together leaders to focus on issues, and a sampling of the issues that they'll be talking about are creating a pipeline of diverse educators, developing multi-tiered systems of support, ensuring equitable access to high-quality curriculum, implementing bilingual education, ensuring racial and cultural equity, engaging families, addressing student mobility, addressing students' mental health needs, and integrating social and emotional and academic learning. You might have heard of one of those two things before, but it was really interesting to see that DESI was offering a conference so closely aligned with the work that we're doing. We're clearly not the only district doing this work, and it'll be great to be able to get together with others and share best practices. And then I wanted to put in one final plug, that barring any unforeseen circumstances at this point, this is our last School Committee meeting at the RJ Gray Junior High. I was talking with Marie earlier and Beth, and Marie said this was year twenty of her being in, you know, this space for School Committee meetings. Believe it or not, she started coming when she was seven years old, and has been coming consistently ever since. Really, it is kind of a momentous thing. I was in the auditorium at the admin building just today. It's coming along very, very well. I think you're going to be excited about the opportunities that provides as a meeting space, not only for how the committee can function, but actually for our ability to connect with the community. We don't have to have community members, you know, forty feet down a long set of tables from us, but also the quality of our broadcast is going to be so much increased. You will later in the meeting see a memorandum of understanding from Acton TV that is directly related to this project. Acton TV is actually fully funding that, so I just want to make sure I also provide the thank you to Acton TV at this point, and we will do that later. But the MOU is just to update kind of our agreement with Acton TV as we move into the new space, and they invest in that equipment for us. So, next time, we will be in the new space. I talked to Beth. We will do some coffee and refreshments for anybody who in the community who wants to come to a School Committee meeting and join us in the new space and enjoy that. So, thank you very much. That's it for tonight.
All right. Well, I'm actually going to give the microphone right back to you, because I believe next up is three point one, our district strategy update.
No, I think you might have the clicker. Oh, it's behind? Never mind. I have the clicker, Beth. So, what I wanted to do tonight is come to you and just provide kind of an interim update regarding where we're at in developing the district strategy moving forward, and provide some context to it. I will say, this is not complete at this point. We're not even in kind of a final draft form. This is still a very early preview of our thinking around this, but I wanted to share some of that with you. So, I provided this graphic, and if you remember, those of you who were on the committee, just after I got hired, I came in June, prior to me starting as the superintendent, and I provided kind of an overview and an entry plan. And in that, I provided a graphic of kind of what are the various stages of an entry process for a superintendent, and how will that play out as I join the district. And I apologize, this is so small that I can barely see it on the screen in front of us, but this is the last chance for that. So, the first thing that a superintendent needs to do coming into a district is really learn as much as possible quickly about what happens across the district, and kind of form some initial perceptions about strengths and challenges that the district faces, and also the educational opportunities ahead. So as I entered, basically from July of my last year until November, that was the chance to get out, listen to stakeholder groups, look at the data around district performance, opportunities, gaps, things like that, and then from, I came back to you and kind of shared the process along the way regularly. And then during the second phase of my entry process, that was really about me confirming some of my initial hypotheses with our leadership team, and then reporting them out to you and to the community, and be able to hear feedback on that process. That resulted in my report of entry findings, which I believe I presented last January to the school committee, and then we had an opportunity to come back and engage in workshop around that to solicit feedback about priorities in that. The third phase of improvement there is really from last February through this summer, and it's continuing on into the fall, and that is taking all of the feedback that was received, because developing a strategy is about collecting feedback and hearing what can be improved, but taking that feedback, which happened through the entry process, and being able to now transform that into something that is designed to guide the district's work moving forward. And so that's the final phase where we're at, and I just wanted to recall that to make sure everyone was familiar with what the entry process entailed and why we're talking about that district strategy. Out of the entry findings, and this is not new information, this was in January, there were six major themes that I talked about in my entry report. One was around the cultural diversity of the district. The second was around district teaching and learning. Third, around the, kind of what is the appropriate balance between coherence and individualism, and that is very relevant to this community. Inclusive environments in our schools, the social-emotional needs of our students, and then having high-performing leadership teams. So there were, if you recall, there were subthemes within each of those key areas, and what we actually did, and you're not going to be able to read this, and that's okay. It wasn't intended to be read, but more of an illustration. With the school committee, and then with our senior leadership team across the district, and also some of our assistant principals and other leaders around the district, we actually engaged in an activity, and everyone did the same activity, where we did a workshop around the entry findings, and everyone was able to essentially tell me what the priorities that they had as an individual were, and it allowed themes and patterns to emerge from that data, to identify kind of key ideas. And I think maybe one of the most illustrative points there, if you look at the slide here, I had gone back and actually color-coded the data to look for patterns, and essentially the more red a piece of data came out, the more important that one theme was to a stakeholder group. I then worked with our administrative team during our retreat over the summer to look at how all of the various leadership teams, including school committee, had looked at this information, and then we synthesized it, and we looked for, what are the common themes that all of our groups have on the top of their mind, and how does that impact what we do? Then we also looked for, if it's not universal across all three groups, what are the themes that are held very in higher, high importance by more than one group? So two groups had it ranked high, or maybe two groups had it ranked high, and a third had it ranked moderate. And what we boiled it down to were there were some primary themes that had emerged from that, and I'm going to, I'm pulling it up on my computer screen so I can read it as well. But one of the key themes that emerged, where, and these are all of the ones where all three of our leadership teams, so school committee, senior leadership, and some of the assistant principals across the district, all had this as of the highest priority. And these were the five areas that came out. What's driving the discrepancies in open enrollment with respect to race, and how can the schools and district effectively respond to this in order to ensure racial equity, which is really racial balance, it's not racial equity, racial balance within the open enrollment program? In moving forward, how can the district leverage professional learning and educator supervision and evaluation in order to increase instructional coherence and outcomes for all students? What strategies might the district utilize in order to ensure that all students have equitable outcomes in literacy and mathematics instruction? How might the district establish and communicate a clear vision and necessary supports for inclusive practice, and ensure that beliefs around inclusive practice permeate both regular and special education settings? How can the district implement a system of social and emotional supports that provides continuity and coherence for students as they progress through the grades in between schools? So those were the five primary themes. Some of the key language I highlighted in orange, just to make it a little, little easier to get to the point in some somewhat longer sentences, which John could be put probably through a readability calculator. There were also some themes, excuse me, that more than one group also held in common, and some of those were, how can the district work with stakeholders to come to consensus on what an expanded notion of success might look like, and how can this be measured over time? What might the district do to ensure that there are effective data collection and analysis systems in place to support teachers in using assessment data to inform instruction? And how might district, how might the district evaluate whether the current service delivery model is the most appropriate for providing services and ensuring equitable access to content instruction from highly qualified licensed teachers? So those were really the major themes that emerged. It doesn't mean that we're not going to work on a lot of what was in the entry report, we certainly will, but we also have to figure out what are the most key themes that we have the capacity to start with. So, with that said, we worked with the leadership team to really hone this and develop four major areas of focus for the district. One is around engaged learning, another is around inclusive practices, another is around social-emotional well-being, and then the fourth is equitable opportunities and outcomes. You will see a lot of familiarity, sorry, it's been a long day, you will see a lot of familiar things, how's that, to our former long-range strategic plan that is very intentional. This district has made a lot of headway in the last few years, and has reached the point where some of the work of the last few years is really starting to have a deep impact across the district. We don't want to stop that work. What we want to do instead is have a strategy that can help us go for the next five years in a flexible way that's responsive to the progress that we make each year, and we feel that these four areas are really going to help us get there. I'll just say briefly, engaged learning was really about putting the academic life and the intellectual life of the school district front and center as an area that we want to continue to grow. We want to make sure that as schools, we know that our primary function is to help students learn and learn at high levels. Knowing that we're already an incredibly high-performing district, and our students do exceedingly well, what we're really hoping to do with this is deepen our students' engagement, and not, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a couple of minutes, but it's really, engagement is the strategy to increase our students' learning. Inclusive practices was somewhat of an outgrowth of our previous goal around equity, but we wanted to separate it off from equity, because we want to focus on school climate and culture and expand our definition of inclusion, not only to just be around equitable outcomes, but around how students experience our schools and how students feel comfortable in our schools. Social-emotional well-being, that really has not changed, and I'll talk maybe a little bit more of the details. We're trying to take a very proactive stance around social-emotional learning and this iteration of the strategy. And then equitable opportunities and outcomes, if you recall the prior language in the strategy, it was about equitable access to curriculum and programs. We wanted to expand that definition, that it's not just about students being able to access our programs and curriculum, it's actually about the outcomes for those students as well. So I just wanted to clarify a couple of things on the big overarching, and the somewhat different, I'm going to change terminology on you a little bit, rather than just calling them goals, these are overarching strategic objectives, and I'm using that term very intentionally, with the difference being, a goal can often be confused with a SMART goal, which is, what are you doing this year within a very finite amount of time, and it's very locked, that there's a very targeted, specific outcome to it. The idea of having strategic objectives is that strategy over a five-year period needs to be fluid and flexible, because we know that there's times when you exceed a goal during a year, there's times when you haven't met a goal during the year, and you have to be able to adjust on the fly. And so the idea of having objectives and overarching objectives is really the thought process behind that, that we don't want to just have our thinking be rigid and fixed over this period of time. So just to clarify some of my own terminology. In terms of engaged learning, and for each of these four objectives, we then broke these down into some strategic initiatives, and the difference between an objective and an initiative, an objective is the overarching target area that you're trying to improve. The initiatives are the actual things you're undertaking in order to achieve that initiative. This is a pre-first draft version. The next steps, and I'm going to preface this so that we're not confusing it, the next steps will be to very, at a more granular level, actually define what each of these is, and to put a sense of what's happening at the various levels of the district, because what happens at the high school will look slightly different from the junior high, will look slightly different from the elementary school, and we actually in this next strategic plan want to have some clarity around what you would expect to see at the various levels. Additionally, what you will see is kind of a working, an initial target of how this might play itself out over three to five years. Rather than just say, all right, this is our goal for five years, but let's work on year one, what we need to say is, this is our goal for five years, here's an initial thought process about how the map could look, and now here's what year one of that needs to be. So it's kind of a five-year plan for the district. For engaged learning, there were about five main ideas that came out. We want to expand our definition of success, and one of the programs that Deb Bukas and I have been looking at really since last year, it's called Portrait of a Graduate. It's really a wonderful program that is designed to bring your entire community together. It gets your students involved, it has your families involved, it has community members involved, it has educators involved, in really clearly defining what the outcomes you want for your students are. That you want kids that have highly skilled content knowledge, but you also want kids with social-emotional skills. And I think we have an opportunity as a community to come together and actually work to define what that graduate should look like of our district, and that also helps us backward plan, starting at the elementary school, how do we need to approach student learning over the course of our years to be able to get to that portrait of a graduate? We want to, and this is how we're really defining kind of that engagement idea, engagement isn't just kids' involvement in the life of schools, it has a really specific definition. There's a cognitive level of engagement, there's an emotional level of engagement, and there's also a behavioral level of engagement. And I don't mean behavioral in terms of like student behavior at school, but what are the behaviors students are exhibiting during learning, and are they behaviorally engaged? So we're going to be working toward really making sure that all of our educators know the strategies that they can use to expand all three areas. We want to increase hands-on learning opportunities for all students at all levels, and we want to be able to appropriately increase the level of student voice and choice in the learning that they're engaging. the learning that they're engaging in. We know that students have changed over the last decade, and what is interesting students today is not what interested students 10 and 15 years ago. And one of the largest pieces of interest that you'll hear students across the state say is, students need to be agents of their own instruction, and they need to have a voice in the types of things that they are able to pursue, and they want it highly personalized in that way. So I think that's another strategy that we want to focus on over the next five years is increasing that. We have a real initiative going around STEAM learning, science, technology, engineering, art, and math. That's one big idea for us. It's really a type of thinking that we want our students to be able to engage in, in that design process. And I think the next meeting, Deb is actually gonna be doing an extended presentation on STEAM, so I'm not gonna give away the farm yet. And then the last one is really around educator growth and development. And what kept coming back on all four of our major overarching objectives is that at the heart of this, our work is only as good as what happens in classrooms every day for every student. And the primary leverage for that is our educators, and we are so fortunate in this community to have the absolute most talented group of educators in the world. So we want to make sure that we continue to provide our educators with opportunities to learn and grow and kind of stretch themselves. So that is a key point of leverage, is really around educator growth and development. And that actually gets expanded a bit into recruitment too, even in our next iteration. Inclusive practice, the heart of inclusive practice is always going to be the relationship between the student and the adult in a school. And if the relationships aren't good, nothing else you do will ever foster a more inclusive environment and help kids feel more connected to school. We also want to prioritize anti-bias education for all of our stakeholders, our students, our educators, and our community. We want to talk about aligning our service delivery, and this is something that Dawn is so much more qualified to speak to than I am, but I'll, I'll try and summarize it in a nutshell. In a less-than-high-performing environment, the various services that are used to support students often happen in isolation and aren't coordinated with each other at a high enough level. And if we want to increase how we're supporting students, we have to focus on the alignment of all of those various supports and resources for kids, so that there's a real continuum of service available for all students. Because what we know now is that every student in our schools needs something just a little bit different than other students, and we need to have the right continuum of services. Dawn, was that a fair enough quick explanation?
Desiloization.
Desiloization, got it. Put that one through a readability calculator. The next one, stakeholder engagement. And I talked a little bit about this earlier, you know, Tessa and I are doing some community coffees just on general feedback about the schools, but Dawn and I are focusing on kind of really the idea of inclusive environments, and how can we make sure all of our stakeholders have feedback into that? Did I skip something?
No.
Oh, you know what? Because I'm trying to see it too, I have it on my computer, I have a clicker and...
It's really far away.
Yeah, so thank you. And then again, what came up shockingly is at the heart of everything we want to do, if we really wanted to impact students, it has to be about how we're helping our educators grow and develop, and how we recruit educators. I'm not gonna get into the details of this quite, quite now, because that'll come. Well, actually, I'll talk just very briefly, because there are a couple of things here. Universal design for learning, there's a lot of research that's emerged in the last 20 years around how to, we now know students come to us with a variety of needs. And what we know is there's certain things that can be done when teachers plan that will universally make that environment accessible to a variety of needs. If we know there are small changes to how we set up our learning environments and how we provide instruction for students, and we make those changes upfront, then they're actually automatically available to all students rather than being, coming an add-on service for students after the fact. So universal design is about making all of our learning environments and all of our instruction accessible at a baseline level for as many students as possible. That's something that actually all of our elementary educators are taking, is the first professional learning workshop of this fall. So all elementary educators have that baseline after this fall. The, talking about instructional practices and approaches, making sure they're responsive to various cultures in our community. The student-centered coaching model, we wanted to put in here, it's not something that's starting new, but it's something that you've supported already, but it certainly is really about inclusive practice. And then again, we come back to educator growth development and that evaluation process, making sure it's effective. Whoops, and I have to do my second click. Equitable opportunities and outcomes, again, we're focusing on not only access, but now outcomes as well. What we are hoping to do with actually some of your input as we go through this process is come up with some really key, we're calling them opportunity indicators, which are equity indicators, that we can come back to year after year after year after year to measure how we're making progress in providing equitable access and opportunities for our students. I'll give you just one example, there's a school district, Cambridge, actually targeted some really key indicators based on a lot of the research that's emerged. So they had third-grade literacy as one of their key indicators. They had eighth-grade mathematics proficiency as another indicator. But they also had an indicator for school climate and culture. They had another indicator for educator diversity. And they had about six or eight of these indicators, and they actually benchmarked themselves year after year, and they made a commitment to showing progress. That's something that we've started some initial thinking about, but we hope to evolve as we get into the strategic plan. We want to make sure that we have robust data systems, this is an area that we can certainly improve as a district. And that also means some consistency about how we collect data and how we use data, and our educators are able to use data in classrooms around how their students are progressing. That really flows into ensuring that we have good literacy and mathematics outcomes. We know third-grade literacy level is the gateway to basically all education. But similarly, we also know that eighth-grade mathematics proficiency is a gateway to upper-level coursework for our students. So just making sure that those two key indicators are really sound for our district, and not just for all, because we say the word "all students," I actually think it sometimes minimizes it, because in our district, sometimes when we say "all," that means the average, and our average is extremely high. But improvement for our district is not about improving the average, our improvement for our district is making sure that every student is having the same experience that we intend them to have. And so really looking much more at the individual student level around progress. And then we still want to continue to examine our big-picture systems. We've talked about open enrollment and making sure that there's some balance across our schools, looking at leveling and tracking of students, particularly as they go through upper-level coursework. We want to talk about our human resources policies and procedures, and that goes to the hiring process, making sure we're continuing to expand educator diversity. And then finally, it shockingly comes still back to educator growth and development, because equity lies in the classroom, right? And that, that's gotta be the primary place. And then finally, social, emotional wellbeing. We want to expand this a little bit to think about school climate and culture. Whoops. There we go. I'll get up by the last slide. We want to, school climate and culture, we talked about relationships being the foundation of inclusive cultures. School climate and culture is the foundation of social, emotional wellbeing. And PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, and that is really about making sure that as students work in a school, there's, it doesn't mean every teacher does exactly the same thing, but there is a consistent set of behavioral expectations within the school and across the teachers, so that as students pass from teacher to teacher over time, students aren't left guessing as to what the expectations in a school should be. That's particularly at the elementary level, it does also have some implications for secondary level, but it's really a primary level focus. We want to be more proactive in our approach to social, emotional learning, and that has to start with figuring out what the skills kids need to have are. There's a great Alice in Wonderland quote that says something to the effect of, if you don't really know where you're going, you're likely not to get there. And in education, just like in math and in English language arts, if you don't know what your curriculum is and the skills you want kids to learn, it's highly unlikely that they're going to learn exactly what you intended them to learn. So we want to better define what those skills are, and curriculum and the supports that take place pre-K through 12. We want to expand opportunities for screening and assessment, particularly at younger grades for social, emotional learning, so that we're not reacting to students' needs, but we're being proactive in identifying them and supporting them. Finally, if we're gonna assess and get a better sense of who needs support, we have to make sure that the systems of support are adequate. We've already entered into a program evaluation that's taking place, it's actually going to start very soon, of our entire kind of social, emotional support program. And we should have that information back round about December, just in time for budget season to be able to inform some of our decisions there. No, not December? Janu-, oh, January now? Okay. Maybe it'll help inform budget season this year, but that's the time, I guess that got updated in the last day, that's okay. And then finally, educator growth and development. And that goes to, social, emotional skills can't be something that's taught external to the curriculum, but we need to help our educators think about ways that social, emotional learning can be integrated appropriately into the curriculum. So for example, when we're doing group work in schools, which is highly appropriate, and every business in the world is telling us that's what they want kids to be able to function in groups, there's an academic learning component that has to be clear. But if you're doing group work at an effective level, you also have to identify the social, emotional learning opportunities that you want students to have out of that, because the two go hand in hand. It's not just about the concrete skills, it's about the soft skills as well. So that's really what that approach is. And that's, again, about educator growth and development. See, I got it this time. What was interesting is, we started talking about this, we started trying to back up to some of these slides and figure out what our buckets looked like, for lack of a better word. Inclusive practice is a bucket, and then these initiatives kind of fall into that bucket. But we started saying, wait a minute, student and adult relationships, that's not about, just about inclusive practice, it's also about engaged learning, because kids can't be engaged in their learning if they don't have great relationships with the adults. It's also about equity. And then it's also about school climate and culture and social, emotional wellbeing. And what we started to think of was, it wasn't about initiatives living in buckets or silos anymore, and I talked about that a little bit before, if we want services that work together for students, we can't silo them. So similarly, if we want a plan that works together for students, we can't silo our initiatives either. And so we did a little exercise, and we realized that a lot of our initiatives that we want to undertake have multiple points of intersection within our four big priorities and strategic objectives. And so we started mapping those out and playing around a little bit with that. And what we came to was actually pretty interesting, and it's, it's really hard to see on this projector, but there were some really key through lines in all of our work that we kept coming back to that really formed a focus of the efforts we need to make. And it really, at the core of all of it were the student-adult relationships, the school climate and culture, our educators, recruitment, growth and development, this idea of universal design for learning and making sure our, our learning environments are already accessible to all. And then this idea of tiered systems of supports and making sure we have the right supports in place, whether it's in math, whether it's in literacy, or whether it's in social, emotional wellbeing. And then we also looked at kind of this idea of responsive instructional practices and materials, in making sure that all of our materials that we're using in our schools and our practices are responsive not only on a cultural level, but to, to the individual learning needs of students. And then also this idea of expanding our notion of success, because if we want to do this, we have to make sure that we can all agree on, what does it look like when students leave us? And what do we want to have happen at that end? So those were the through lines, and then we also looked at how other big ideas intersected across those. And it was really interesting, because I, I was looking at this in my office one day, and what I came to was the first thing that I talked to our educators about when I started at ACT in Boxborough, that I had four experiences that I wanted our students to have while they were in our schools. I wanted each student to feel loved unconditionally, I wanted them to feel valued as an individual and for who they were as a person, I wanted them to be challenged intellectually, physically, and emotionally while they were with us in school, and then I wanted to make sure that we supported each child the way that that student needed support. And we hadn't looked at this connection, but as soon as I got the Venn diagram and I put the compass next to it, I said, wow, this is, it's really kind of cool that these speak to each other. And so I just wanted to, to draw your attention to that, because I, I'm hoping that you feel that this is a reflection of what you've heard about through the entry process and the feedback that I presented to you from our community and our discussions over the last year. But this is really kind of an initial framework for where I'd like to take our district over the next five years, with really the, the outcomes being, what do we want students to experience in school, which are these kind of four compass points? So I will just give you a, a couple of quick ideas on next steps, because I think that's important. So we are continuing internally to solicit some feedback and refining our strategic objectives and initiatives. We, and that's part of my presentation to you tonight, to hear some of your thoughts about that. We are defining our multi-year path through the objectives, you know, and I put the quote, I, I don't know if I read this or made it up, but it seems like a nice quote, but Rome wasn't built in a day, but it also didn't happen by accident. And then we want to define and map each initiative over the life of the plan, and then we will be bringing that to you at that point for school committee adoption. I expect that to happen in November of this year. And then after that, we need to make sure that we're working with all of our schools to deeply understand the plan, and we've been talking to principals that the next iteration of school improvement plans should have a high degree of alignment with this overarching plan as a district. And it's, it's kind of that saying that, you know, a, a crew team works better if everyone's rowing in the same direction. And I, I've always said the start of that is making sure your boats are in the same river. So your boats are in the same river, you know, and then the high-performing team is all rowing in the same direction. So that's, that's really kind of the, the overview for you, but I'm welcome to answer any questions, take some comments and feedback.
Michael.
Peter, thanks for, for this presentation. It's good overall, what I heard, but I really want to make a comment on the race balance.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
The race balance, racial balance, whatever. So instead of in order to balance, balance, I would like to say, you know, the school leaders could, you know, also the teachers could look into understanding each race, you know, the culture of them, and then their focus and their strengths, their concern, and what they're looking for, and then come back to school and then to do, maybe to do some improvement or some work in order to attract the students. I don't, I don't want to say, you know, the, the school administration to use power to balance.
Yeah, Michael, actually, I very much appreciate that comment. I, I agree with you wholeheartedly on that. The more I've thought about kind of the, where we're not balanced racially, I don't think that that's a solution. I actually think that's a symptom of something else, that there's certain things that attract families to one school or another, and I think that we want to take a, take a look at that. So I appreciate that feedback.
As I looked over the plan at home and hearing it again today, I, I feel like, how, how could one not rally behind this? It's, it's, it seems so thorough, so student-centered. It seems like a tremendous amount of training and work for administrators as they look at teachers and try to implement this, and it seems, it seems daunting, like teachers will have to do a lot to love the whole child and deliver non-siloed, you know, services and education that is personalized to each student. And I think I, I urge us to think even further and dig deeper into our class sizes. I think that this is a lot of work to do with 24 kids, and I think that many of those kids have language, learning, social, emotional issues, and it's, it's, it seems almost, it seems difficult to me. The other thing that I would say in tandem with that is that specialists who see 520 kids can't deliver any of these values in, in a great way, in a meaningful way. And how do we, we must also fold that into the formula. A librarian or a PE teacher that is literally spending September, October, November getting to know 520 kids at McCarthy Town can't engage with students in this way. The model is, is weird, and so, I, I don't, not weird, but maybe, maybe it works, maybe doesn't. It's, it's just that it seems so personalized, and I love that aspect. seems so personalized and I love that aspect of it, so I think it is ill-fitting and with specialists, or we'd have to think more about that, or you would. And one last comment is that somehow for me, like, this feels like, oh, we could, you could really work this into the fabric of an elementary school, this is, this is great for elementary school and I sort of, I hope that we have real buy-in for the upper grades with this, I hope that we, it feels like, yes, this is, I could see smaller kids really flourishing here and those teachers really finding ways to do this. How do you do that in the high school, much like the specialists, when you have, you know, I don't know how many kids in a day and the learning is different and more intensive and the rigor is just the converse, I don't know, it seems, I just would love to picture that better at the upper level and I can't right now and maybe that's okay. I just love the content so much and it's gonna be great, just can't wait to see what you do.
I'll see you, Adam.
Just make eye contact with both of you first, go back behind the podium. You know, in reading this and then, and then receiving the presentation from you, Peter, I'm struck by those TED Talks that sort of start with some coincidental story and then meander around and then all of a sudden at the end, boom, it all comes together and for me, that was the alignment of your compass, which to me was sort of the synthesis of your early onboarding conversations, just talking to people and then to then see how that through a really purposeful investigation actually resulted in sort of the same result, but really detailed. So, I really appreciate that and I would, you know, echo what Maya said in that I think you've presented to us a beautiful forest and I'm really looking forward to seeing what those trees are like, because, you know, between the objectives and the initiatives, there's a lot of good overview there and, you know, all key and I, one of the things that you said, which was to make progress on our objectives, we need those initiatives and to make progress on those initiatives, we need to lay them out more than just one year at a time. So, you know, I'm looking forward to that level of detail, what I see so far makes a lot of sense and I'm really excited about. The questions about what does this look like across all of our different service delivery models, what does this look like across all of our different school programs and levels, I think that's the detailed work that will be a fun challenge for you and your team coming forward, but from what I see so far, I'm really excited.
Yeah, and just so you know, we wanted to come with the initial idea first before we did all the detail work, because if we're really off target, it's better to know now.
Yeah, Sam here, this is like, I describe it like, this is like GPS for driving for the next five years and I just want to kind of saying, because there's a lot of details, we don't know what a tree looks like and every school has different focus, so in terms of how we can establish the communication channel, so each different school and at different phase, at different timeframe can get the feedback and establish the process so we can make this outcome, you know, better for each age and each school, that will be great. Thank you.
I have to say, this is incredibly exciting, reading through this, I'm just so, I'm so happy to see everything kind of coming together, I would, especially excited about increasing engagement, so I would kind of echo what Maya was saying and while I think a lot happens in the elementary schools where it's, it's very, not easy, it's more conducive to creating environments like this, I think it's, I think it's much harder once you get into the high school classes and I would really like to see a real focus there to get kids, because I've seen with my kids and other kids, the drop-off of engagement as they proceed up through the grades and I, you know, I'm excited to see what you're gonna do with all of this. And also a question about, and maybe I'm jumping the gun here, on the STEAM week that we, I'm hoping are participating in and what that looks like, or maybe let us know afterwards, I don't know.
I'll give you a little, little bit right now.
You want to give a quick preview?
Sure, it's STEAM weeks, so we're going to expand, well, the state has one week for STEM, they're calling it STEM, we're going to expand it for two weeks for STEAM and it's going to back right up into the PIP STEM Fest, so there'll be a continuation right into the community gathering, so a little bit more to come next week.
You know, I think it's, just to comment on Amy's point and Maya's, because it was about kind of how do we chunk this and actually have the impact that we want, there is great deep learning happening in all our classrooms across the district and I think what we want to do is continue to identify those areas that cause the highest levels of student engagement and then really just celebrate that type of work. That's because, that's the type of work we want students to be engaging in. I think you look nationally at trends, you can, there's a lot of data around student engagement and how it changes over time and everywhere, there's a precipitous decline in student engagement as they go from elementary school to middle school into high school and that's kind of a natural occurrence, I just don't know why that has to be acceptable. And I think that there's a lot we can do to really reverse that trend and I'll be honest, I see high levels of engagement in a lot of the places I go in, I was just in a whole series of classrooms today, junior high, Blanchard, high levels of engagement happening everywhere. Again, I think it's helping people identify, what are the types of things that students do that cause that high level of engagement and then how do we incrementally continue to increase that and stay with it.
So, I want to go back to the bullets in the river and the question of coherence. I was at dinner of the board for the Arizona State University Biodesign Institute and was talking to a professor of molecular biology about his students and what they did and those students, in a lot of cases, you think, well, molecular biology, you know, you've got a well-defined track and therefore you're gonna be a molecular biologist and of course the reality is that only a third of them, you know, are really actively molecular biologists and, but most of the students coming in are thinking, oh, I'm gonna be a molecular biologist.
Right.
And what we have there is what I would consider to be a failure of imagination, so that while we as an educational community might want to behave in a completely coherent way, what we really are striving to do is to open up a very large universe of possibilities so that all of the students flee the river and go in different directions. And I think that that's something that frequently gets lost and so I would hope that on the one hand, you know, as we have that discussion around coherence and individuality, we would remember that from a student perspective, you know, we should hope to see people going in lots of different directions. The other thing that I wanted to comment on is that, you know, a lot of people talk about having children and I frequently said in response to that, nobody should want to have children, you should want to have adults. Now, everybody who sent their kids off to school, you know, I think we'll find-
I want to have children.
It's like, I miss my kids, I sent them off to school just when they were getting good. And I think, you know, as I listened to some of the discussion around what we would hope to provide, you know, as an educational experience, we never lose sight of the fact that what we actually want to create is independent learning, so that the best education is the one that creates no additional need for education. And I think part of that, you know, is the answer to the fact that we don't have infinite resources, because once people can learn all by themselves, we don't need more resources. So I hope we would never lose sight of that. And the last point I wanted to make was that Ginny commented the other day that the school can only go so far in helping a student have a good day. If a student, you know, has a bad day at home and then a good day at school, that still might make it difficult to be a good day and likewise, if a student has a good day at home and a terrible day at school, they still are gonna struggle to have a good day. So that as we look at this question of social emotional well-being, first of all, let's be honest, that that relates to those family experiences, the school experiences and everything else people go through for a day, only a piece of which we control. So that as we look at what we can do, the piece that we want to do is make sure that we control, you know, as best we can, the interface, you know, that there's some stuff that exists between the two and we want to have a positive impact, but we also want to be honest about the fact that we don't control everything and that has implications for what we can and cannot do. And of course, that last piece that we can't control is in the hands of the community and so everybody, as they participate in communal activities and, you know, in my view, the reason that Acton and Barksboro have been successful is the fact that when people are out, wherever they are, doing, you know, youth soccer or Boy Scouts or whatever they're doing, they're encountering people who aren't engaged, who are excited about what they're doing, more enthusiastic, you know, are wanting to help other people and that if our students are really going to have a deep sense of being loved and, you know, a deep sense of feeling well, that will be a product not only of what we do here in the schools, but of what we also do in the community at large.
Sure, do you mind if I just quickly, just comment, you know, I just want to add one nuance to that idea that, you know, kid, we know students bring the outside world with them when they come into our schools, but one nuance I always come back to and it's interesting, John Hattie, I don't know if you know his work at all, but he's essentially an educational researcher and what he studies is the effect that various educational stimulus have on kids and the number one effect size that is the quality of the teacher that a student has and the quality of instruction that a student has, way, way, way down the list is what happens in the house in terms of educational outcomes for students, so it's a really interesting, and he just does meta-analysis of this. So I always come back to that and I think it's, we, there is a finite point, that schools can only control what they can control, but what we continue, can continue to do is add tools to our toolboxes to expand the influence that we have and I think that's really the goal of the work that we do, is continue to add our tools and make sure our toolbox is more robust. So for example, when you talk about social emotional learning, you know, we know that kids bring all sorts of experiences, but one of the most effective universal designs for classrooms in social emotional learning that makes it accessible for all students is to have trauma-informed classrooms and if educators understand concept of trauma-informed care and they use those to design learning environments, then even students who are coming to those learning environments with trauma from outside the school still have an ability to access that environment more effectively. So, you're right, there's no one person who can fix the world and I do believe that, but I think that there's an awful lot of tools we can add to make it a lot better, I guess is the nuance I would add.
You want to respond to John? He's quick.
Yeah, first of all, I want to echo what you said, John said that, you know, we should offer, you know, expand the range of the directions that students can go with and also the opportunities. The second thing is that, you know, regarding the self-learning, so I would say that in school, we should focus on, you know, the teachers, you know, try to use resources, teachers especially, and then maybe after school, we should, you know, encourage the students to, you know, to learn how to self-learn. All right, thank you.
Thanks. I just think it's a really excellent strategic plan, really was, felt really inspired when I read it and I read it a few times because there's so much here, I just didn't feel like there was anything missing. When you think about what is happening now, sort of an educational theory and what people are trying to do, whether through charter, public or private schools, so much of that is here in your plan and I just was thrilled to see it and know that it's a part of AB and that that's the direction that things will be going. I guess my concern, if it's a concern, is how inclusive and great of a plan it is just because it seems like a lot to take on and so many different areas of it feel so huge to do it all at once, when I know it's over a matter of years, but sort of where to start and what will this look like, the classroom, at the student level, you know, how will it really play out? I loved the way that you balanced so many things throughout it, it felt like there were a lot of tensions that you were sort of balancing both sides of, sort of throughout it and I thought that that was, that's really a skill that you have, that is one of the reasons why I was interested to come on board of the school committee and be a part of it is just because looking at even, you know, in every aspect of it, I was sort of focusing on data collection and that that came up as equitable opportunities and outcomes and just thinking about the balance between how do we gather data that can be useful without turning children into data points and how do we sort of balance that, looking at a whole child and a person and a relationship and feeling loved and at the same time, having similar data that we can use to inform what we're doing. So I thought that that was here and then I'll be also interested to see how that, how that becomes concrete and how that turns into what, does the data look like, how is it shared with teachers and how is it shared with parents, will it look like a different report card, will it look like a different way that student-teacher conferences are held and data that's shared in those meetings and just sort of the concrete, I'm excited to see where it goes. And it's a lot, it's a lot and it's good, the direction.
I will say what we're actually trying to do, you know, we've gone through several iterations and we keep trying to look for areas that we can hone and really prioritize and that's why I think, you know, it's interesting, because everyone's strategic plan is presented in buckets, like, here's one objective, here's what we're doing, here's another objective, here's what we're doing. I actually think I might just stay with the Venn diagram and maybe make it more of an interactive one that you can dig into the diagram by clicking, I don't know how that will work yet, someone will figure it out, but, but I don't want to lose the idea that there are, the closer things are to the center, the more time we should be spending on them and that's really about how we can find some ways to prioritize our work. So, like looking, even just looking at the data culture, we're working on educator evaluation this year with our administrative team to hone our own skills around that and some of the early work we're doing to help create that data culture is around student learning goals and working with our educators across the district to think about how to stretch ourselves in terms of our student learning goals and think more at that student level. And I think taking small steps like that is actually how you create a culture that then can take the bigger steps without a lot of need for direction. So, it's that balance and it goes back to what John said, you have to be loose enough that people bring their creativity to it, because you want that outcome for students, but you have to be tight about the big areas that you want to have cohesion on. And there is a yin yang kind of balance to that where, you know, the idea that we want our students to be more deeply engaged and that that means cognitive behavior and emotional engagement, that's something we need to be tight about. How people can get there needs to be highly personalizable and customizable so that it has that impact on kids, so it's just a thought on that.
Well, I love a good graphic, I would encourage you to stick with this and not do buckets, for sure. It's harder to get through, but it's more authentic, I think. I'm trying to really understand this graphic deeply, but from the perspective of what is a teacher thinking about when they sit down to design lessons or pull out a lesson and adapt it for the class that's coming in or the new group of students, what's driving instructional design? And what I, the way that I understand this is the group in the middle, that's the group of, that's straight down the middle, that the core, right in the middle is educator, recruitment, learning and growth and then if you move out, school culture and climate, student adult relationships, the coaching, and then down, universal design, multi-tier, that's, the way I'm reading this is that you're setting the infrastructure to support the strategic objectives that you want teachers to be thinking about as they sit down to design instruction. So I'm hoping I kind of got that right and then the stuff that's kind of sprinkled all around are the, the day-to-day stuff that's gonna help move that forward. Okay, so, just some cautionary things that came to my mind was, and Nora, you mentioned this and so have others, that scaling something often results in reduction in quality of something, because it just becomes less and less possible to meet individual needs when you're trying to, you know, when you have a class of 25 or, you know, whatever, it's, that's just kind of like a thing. And I just want to throw out a cautionary note about that, that we want to have high quality, that's hard to do when you scale something, it's easier to do when you're just dealing with kind of smaller systems. It's easier to do when you're just dealing with kind of smaller systems than, than the data systems. I don't want to become a slave to data. There are some, there's, there must be a, an in-between point, a sweet spot between everything being subjective and being like data crazy. So hopefully we'll find that. And then the last thing is, I was wondering how, I think it would be important to educate school councils on this graphic because they're the ones driving the school improvement plans. So I just wanted to throw that out there as well. Great, this, I love it. That's a great, great graphic and a great job on this.
Thank you. No, thank you. I think one thing we're really trying to push this year, especially as we talk about student learning goals, is data doesn't mean numbers. There's quantitative data, but there's also an awful lot of qualitative data and it's really, we're actually maybe backing away from the use of the word data and instead thinking about it's evidence of learning and evidence of improvement because you can't boil everything in a kid down to a number. And it doesn't work that way. But even things like student surveys about their feelings of school climate and culture, things like that, that can be great data to talk about and really help push and drive improvement. So great, absolutely.
Thank you, Peter. That was fantastic and I really look forward to what this will bring. So next up, we have a presentation from Marie on a preliminary presentation and discussion of all-day kindergarten.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Thank you. Okay, you might remember in the spring, we made a presentation about all-day kindergarten. At that time, we learned that about 80% of our families had requested all-day for this year. That number has steadily gone up over time. And we started to talk about the fact that we think we should start thinking about all-day kindergarten universally. So we're back with a bunch more information and things for you to think about, possible funding, ways we can start to think. And so I'm going to go over the details. There's a lot of it in your packet. And then we will come back again, so this won't be sort of the end of it. But this will hopefully help further our thinking and your discussions. So first of all, we have preliminary enrollment numbers. The official enrollment numbers are October 1st. I'd actually like to introduce Sally Cunningham back there. Sally is our registrar and she does all of our enrollment and state reporting work. And so a lot of this information is stuff that Sally's pulled together over time for us. So whatever I can't answer, she should be able to. We did have some drop in enrollment this year. And, you know, we had projected quite a bit of drop in enrollment. And in 2015, 2016, the housing market really had a boom and it didn't, we didn't have as much of a drop as we thought we were going to have. And this year, we sort of got back to dropping enrollment. And we knew this year through the next couple of years, we're going to be what we call the trough, kind of the lowest enrollment. We send this all off after October 1st, when we have final official numbers, to the demographers who will then look at all of it and come back and give us new projections. But this year's projections in particular, we're down 152 kids K to 12. And 85 drop at elementary, 26 at junior high. And last year, we had dropped 40 at the junior high. So you're starting to see some material improvement in class size there. We knew we had sort of a two-year jump at the junior high and so now we're kind of back where we thought we would be. And then the high school, really a small drop, 26 students out of about 1,800. For a total of 152, it was actually 21, I'm sorry, I was looking in the wrong column. We're down 64 at the junior high, 40 the year before, so 104 at the junior high. And we're down 21 at the high school. I was comparing it to the projections, so they're kind of similar, but, so we're down 67 elementary, 64 junior high, 21 high school, total of 152, 3% across the board. Okay? You'll hear more about that. We'll come back the beginning of November with the projections and kind of a better analysis of it. Kindergarten. So I reported this to you in April. We came in 40, 40 students, just want to make sure I'm looking at the right because they're close. 40 students lower than the projection at kindergarten. And it was 45 fewer in Acton and five more in Boxborough. Complete opposite of last year, which was the opposite of the year before. So I can't figure it out. So we ended up with 306 students. We thought we were going to have 346. And across the board, our class sizes are improving. So we still had classes over where we'd like them to be, over the guidelines. So this has helped a lot, particularly at the junior high. Team sizes were quite tight. We had teams between 120 and 130. And now we've got them down between 105 and 115 where we'd like them to be. So that's good. Now, half-day. So we had the fewest number of students in half-day this year that we've ever had. 66 total students in half-day distributed across six schools. 16 of those are at Blanchard, and so we do have a dedicated half-day class at Blanchard. But the other five schools, we've gone hybrid. So there are classrooms in the other five schools that have half-day and all-day kids mixed into the same classroom. And then the half-day kids go home in the middle of the day. There are pros and cons to that. I have a slide about that. But for this slide, 78% of our kids are in all-day and 22% are in half-day. Everybody got what they wanted. If they wanted all-day, they're in all-day. They wanted half-day, they're in half-day. The cross-town data is interesting and increasing over time. So we have 103 Acton students attending Blanchard. So of the 473 students at Blanchard, 22% of them are from Acton. There are 68 Boxborough students attending schools in Acton. Now, it sounds like a lot of Acton students are going to Blanchard, and they are, but it's 4% of Acton students are attending school in Boxborough. 16% of Boxborough students are attending school in Acton. So the way we look at that is that it's really been successful in that families can specify their choice and can go to school where it makes the most sense for them. We did a survey. All the survey results are in your packet. We surveyed three grades of students, parents, guardians. So last year's kindergarten, first grade, and then the incoming kindergarten, which is now this year's kindergarten. Okay? And we got about 95 responses from each class, about a third of each class responded. So it's a fairly good response rate, 289 total responses. We asked about why people selected their schools, why they selected half-day, why they selected all-day. We also asked for some feedback on the kindergarten process. I have the detailed survey responses in the packet, but I took out some highlights. The first is why do people pick an elementary school? We've asked this question over time and the responses tend to be fairly consistent. The biggest reason is the school philosophy, followed by teachers, conversations with friends, neighbors, family, the tour, the principal, the facility, and so on. But by far, the biggest reason is school philosophy. Next. Now, these two charts are a little different than what was in your original packet. They are in the updated packet. So the question is, rate the degree to which each of the factors below influence your preference for all-day K. And then the next slide is half-day K. These slides I filtered out, so the only people on the all-day slide are people who picked all-day. And the people on the half-day slide are the people that picked half-day. So it's more accurate. What was originally in your packet was all people who responded. So you had half-day people on the all-day slide. So of the people who chose all-day, the number one reason was my child's academic development and needs. The number two reason, close behind, parent's work schedule. The third is my child's social emotional development needs, followed by my child's physical development needs, and so on. So they picked all-day K for academic, followed by work schedule, followed by social, emotional, and physical. The people who picked half-day, so that was 206 answers there. 72 people responded who had picked half-day over the three-year period of time. Number one reason why they picked half-day, they wanted their child to have more time in the afternoon for play. Secondly, wanted their child to have more time in the afternoon with family. Third, social emotional development. And fourth, all-day K was too expensive. We theorized that expensive would be up at the top and it wasn't. Next. To what degree was the entire process clear and easy to understand? It was fairly positive, a lot of medium, a lot of high. We wanted to get some feedback about the process because we do tours in every school and we do night meetings in every school. And sometimes we hear from parents that it's kind of overwhelming. So we're kind of looking at whether we want to do all of that all the time. All right. Now, in Acton-Boxborough, I sort of explained this at the beginning, but we are, we have hybrids right now. And Blanchard has a half-day, all the other schools have the hybrid. The half-day students go home in the middle of the day. The bottom bullet is kind of important one to think about. Even though 78% of our students are in all-day, we are delivering a half-day curriculum. Because we have half-day students, we're teaching to all students. The half-day students go home, there's some enrichment, there's some further time on learning in the afternoon. But the core curriculum, all of our specials are all taking place in the morning. So by having a mixture of half and all-day, and particularly a mixture in the same classroom, we're really cramming all of the instruction into the morning. And so it's not, we're not teaching a full all-day curriculum. So the benefits and the challenges, that's part of what I was just talking about. So you can kind of read through that. The scheduling, kind of pushing it all into the morning, the school community in the classroom when some kids are leaving in the middle of the day. But people, everybody can get what they want for all-day and half-day, and there's clearly a strong need for all-day. And there are about 20% of our families really prefer half-day. So the next few slides come from information I got from a report done by Strategies for Children. And it talks about all-day K across Massachusetts. The average tuition is 3,500. We're at 4,500. There is a range, like a wide range. As of 2017-18, so two school years ago, 277 districts in Massachusetts offered district-wide all-day kindergarten, 87%. Only 38 had partial all-day K like we do, and two only had half-day. So basically 40 districts, or 13%, didn't have universal all-day kindergarten without The expansion is graphed on this chart. This is the number of kids in Massachusetts in all-day, and it's up to 96% of students are in all-day in Massachusetts. The next two charts graph sort of with color where those districts are. So the two white districts, no full-day K offered. That's Concord and Needham. They both offer it now. Concord offers like a modified version, Needham implemented full all-day K this year. The light blue says 10 to 64% of students are in all-day. We are in the light blue. We've kind of passed that 64% mark by now. A lot of the light blue is in eastern Massachusetts. The medium blue says 65 to 89% of students are in all-day. And then the dark blue is 90 to 100%. And then the next slide talks about tuition and the range of tuition. So the lighter the color, the lower the tuition. We're in the dark orange, which is what a lot of them are, which is 3,500 to 5,000. And then this is a list of the districts that moved over a two-year period. 2017-18, there were, I think, 10 to 12 districts. 2018-19, there were another 10 to 12 districts. And I don't have a lot of information about who went there this year, other than I know Needham did. All right. So now back to Acton-Boxborough. So this is our all-day K budget. We have roughly $1.1 million in revenue from tuition for all-day students. This year, we have 240 students. Last couple of years, we had more like 220. So $1,080,000 in revenue and the expenses, so actually, the total revenue ended up being $991 after scholarships. And the expenses were $1,080,000. So roughly $1.1 million in expenses. This includes, we now have all-day staffing everywhere except for one classroom. So the only expense left to add is one more classroom. So in order to implement all-day, we're talking about $1.2 million, we gave you that estimate last year. $120,000 of it is what we would call additional expense beyond what we're spending right now. So we have to fill the gap of the tuition, which is $1,080,000 plus $120,000. All right? Moving to all-day would cost $1.2 million. We could consider possible phasing in of funding. Two possible methods. We could either reduce tuition over time and/or we could supplement the budget with E and D. So I have a few models there to talk through. So the first model is reduce tuition over time. So this year, it's $4,500. We have hybrid kindergartens. Next year, we could go to 3,500. That would give us a $240,000 gap because the tuition would be reduced. Plus, if we made every classroom all-day, we have an additional $120,000 in expenses. We could fund that with $150,000 in the budget and $210,000 out of the reserve. We right now have about $260,000 in the all-day K reserve. The following year, we could go down another thousand, charge 2,500. Again, 240 reduction in revenue, put 190 in the budget, take 50 out of the all-day K fund, and we'd take 210 out of E and D. And it keeps going this way. All right? The next year, we could go to 1,500, and then in FY '24, it could be free. So from now, that's a four-year phase in to get to free tuition. What's good about it is the budget increases gradual. The use of E and D is less than the other models. It's a total of $1.2 million over four years. The downside is we would continue The downside is we would continue with either half-day or hybrids for four years, for three more years. And that means limiting the curriculum really to the half-day curriculum. Model two is kind of a middle ground, in which next year, we'd go down to $2,500, and the following year would be free. The budgetary increase is similar. $150 the first year, $200 each of the next four years, $250 the last year. The use of E and D is higher. So $300 next year, $740 the next year, $650, $450, $250. So you see how the levers are working here? We've got the budget, we've got tuition, and we've got E and D. The third is to say you're going to go to all-day K next year. The difference here is mostly you use more E and D. So we phase in the budget, $200,000 over six years. That gets us to the $1.2 million. We use $800 E and D the first year, $740 the second year, $600, $400, $200, till we get there. The last model is very similar, only instead of putting $200 in each year, we put $300 in in three of the years. So we go to free next year, $200 in the budget, then $300, $300, $300, $100. And we use E and D not quite as much as the previous model. So they're kind of similar, but wanted to give you a range of possibilities. Why consider universal all-day kindergarten? 78% of our parents are requesting it, even with tuition. Equity. Equity is the big reason that we really started looking at this. While some families apply for scholarships, many do not. Families who cannot afford all-day might attend half-day because of the cost. Last year, 25% of the students in half-day were on free and reduced lunch. This year, it's 15%. Those are preliminary numbers, so it's not quite as bad this year. We did a lot in between to reach out to families, to really make sure they have help with the paperwork, multiple languages, inviting them in. We're continuing to do that. So we've identified 15% of our families in half-day are on free and reduced lunch, and we're reaching out to them to see if we can assist them. They may not want all-day, but if they do, we want to make sure we help. Curriculum, so if we went to universal all-day K, the curriculum can be redeveloped to make use of the whole day. More instruction, more play, more social-emotional learning. More opportunities to develop strong classroom community. 87% of Massachusetts school districts are already doing it. So those are kind of the reasons. We did not get into performance. We have done some studies, and we'll come back at another meeting with that. But let's just say that's not the driving force here. Okay?
Are there any cost savings because of the busing? The fact that we wouldn't have to do the midday busing?
A little bit. I hadn't thought of that. We'll look at that.
I mean, it's better environmentally, but checking to see. And I will put in my two cents on the funding models. I have to say, I think if we went with something, I kind of feel like if we do anything except just take the leap all in one year, I mean, I would be a little upset if I had to pay $2,500 for all-day K in the next year, knowing the next, from then on, it would be free. I don't know. I just think that once we make the decision, then we should make the decision. So my two cents.
Thanks, Maria. I think, you know, when I first reviewed this and started to think about it, while the budget is clearly proposed here, I think the part that I'd love to see more information on in future presentations are what might the difference in outcomes be for all of our kindergarteners if we develop a full-day curriculum? And what might the change in outcomes be for those students who might be receiving services today on an IEP that only qualifies them for a half-day? And how might putting them in an equitable situation with all of their peers for a full-day program, how that might affect their outcomes? You know, I think we would probably see, and I could comment on this from my own experience, that the more interventions and services that you can get earlier on in someone's, you know, educational progress, the better the payoff will be later on in the future. So, you know, while I think the budget information is important to have, I think what I would really want to balance that against is what's the benefit of that cost? And I think that being able to see some information reports on that benefit is a, it would be a really helpful component. And then I think the other part of this that I would love to hear some feedback on is how our Director of Finance feels about these commitments in terms of E and D, sort of knowing how tightly we, not tightly, prudently, I believe is your term, David, prudently we budget, and, you know, seeing some fairly large numbers and, you know, encumbering that out of E and D, knowing that we are well-funded in that right now, but not, you know, not knowing what the future may hold. I think that would be another good piece of information to bring to the committee so that, you know, as we make a decision, we want to see both the, what the output would be, what the benefits would be for our students, but then also what some of those risks may be on the budgetary side if we're going to commit to a long-term use of some of our E and D over a number of years.
Oh, thank you. I have a question about page five, the graphic on the top. Oh, sorry. It's the rate the degree to which each of the factors below influence your preference for half-day kindergarten? Yeah, I think that one, yes. So this one's really important to me, to understand why parents are choosing half-day kindergarten when they are. And I was, had a couple of questions just about the graph. Could parents make more than one choice, so they could choose more than one option in this survey?
For every choice, they could rate high, medium, low, or none.
Okay. And you have high, medium, low, or none there. I don't on mine, I'm sorry. Maybe I have a different graph with numbers at the bottom, and I was wondering what the numbers meant. But you've, okay, that makes a lot more sense. So they, okay, so for each item, they could rate it high, medium, or low, or none?
Exactly.
For each one of those?
Exactly.
Okay. And then I was wondering also if you were planning on finding out what parent preference would have been if the cost had been taken out of their decision?
We didn't ask that question.
If there's a way to, I don't know, if there's a way to find that out. Were it free, would they choose it? I think is my main question that I have of parents, because I know from my own experience, it was different for each of my kids. But I think that, you know, I don't want to wax on about the pace of society and little kids growing up so quickly and the push toward heavy academics in the younger years. Some kids really do benefit from a lighter academic schedule and coming home for half a day. And so I just don't know if we have enough interest in that, if it were free, to maintain still at least one half-day kindergarten. And then I also always have wondered if there could be an option to do half-day kindergarten for half of the year and then move into a whole day? I don't know if those sort of models have been considered.
So now that we have hybrid, when you're in a hybrid classroom, you can move anytime?
Right. But the hybrids have their own, as you sort of described, issues that are really different, present a lot of their own challenges in terms of the community in the classroom and the teachers trying to teach everything in the first part of the day that doesn't happen. I don't know if that might take away some of the, a lot of what you were speaking to, I really understood the benefits and challenges that hybrid Ks maybe don't factor into half-day versus whole-day if it's a purely half-day kindergarten classroom. I don't know if there would be enough, 20% seems like a lot, but if it were free, would they pick that? I don't know.
That's really good feedback and questions. We'll think about whether we can get more information like that. We have talked more about if we had half-day separate from all-day. Could we have a half-day in one location, but not every location, kind of mix kids from schools? If we did, can we live with the all-day classes going further in curriculum or not? Those are kind of tough questions that we've been talking about.
Thank you.
I'll call someone else in a second. I have a quick follow-up question to what Nora asked. So are the two kindergartens, full-day kindergartens at Blanchard, still operating on this sort of half-day curriculum, or are they not?
All the kindergartens are operating on a half-day curriculum. They have a little more leeway in that they can put some things in the afternoon because all their kids. But the whole district is operating on a half-day curriculum.
There just seems to be a discrepancy between the idea that the curriculum is the same whether you go to half-day or full-day, yet the number-one reason parents chose full-day was the academic needs. So do you think that they just that badly want the enrichment, or that they really, do all parents really understand that the programs are academically identical? And is that, is there a feeling out there that that can't be true? Because I think that's sort of the murmurs that I remember hearing, like, well, how can that be? They're surely doing more.
So we certainly tell them throughout the process. Yes, I think people perceive that there's more in all-day. One thing we've sort of said is everything in kindergarten is learning, right? So you may not have another literacy block or another math block, but you have more time with kids, you have more recess time, you have more socialization. Deb, do you want to?
So I guess what's hard to understand is sort of unpacking what academic needs are, right? So is that just more time to explore and to integrate sort of what you're learning? That very well could be the definition for some folks, and maybe that's why they chose the full-day, not necessarily the breadth of the curriculum that's going to be quote taught or covered. So I think it's just hard to get underneath a little bit of what somebody might have meant by that.
I would like to see a data from you that, because Massachusetts right now had 287 school districts, right, you know, offer the all-day K. So I want to know after they offer the all-day K, what are, what were the, you know, the enrollment change over the years after they offered this? Also, you know, compared to before the offer? So that's one, that's one thing. And then, I'm not sure if you could, you know, do some research and then provide this data, show this data to us. The second thing is that I know, I do notice that you have, you mentioned that in your slide, you mentioned that, you know, the Massachusetts, most Massachusetts school district start offering this all-day K after the recession recovery. So the recession, are you, are you talking about the economy recession? Or what was that recession? I mean, so like?
I don't, I don't know that. I didn't say that. So.
I seen one slide, I couldn't remember what.
There's one slide that has two years' worth of 10 to 12 districts each year added it in. That was 24 districts out of 287. I don't know the years the rest of them implemented it. It might have been there somewhere, but I don't think I saw that. Yep, go ahead.
So there was a period of time when the Department of Education was offering grants to implement all-day K across the state. If your district signed on to implement during that period, the state would actually offset large chunks of the cost of transitioning. It did come with a whole lot, this is going to be shocking, the state had a lot of requirements that went with it that many districts found not to be in the best interest of some kids. And so there were a number of districts across the state that didn't take that all-day K grant when the opportunity was offered. But you can see, it's actually a fairly linear line up from about 2000 on, on that chart of who's enrolled in all-day K, that I believe, maybe Dave, you'd be able to answer, but I think 2000 was about the year that the all-day K grant came in at the state. Somewhere around that time period, maybe? That's my best guess.
And Michael, just your other point, I do have history of how many kids were enrolled in all-day in Acton-Boxboro over the years, so we can send that out in the next time. Did you say?
No, I'm not saying, I'm not talking about the Acton-Boxboro. I'm talking about those already offer the all-day K, full-day K, those school districts that, you know, what are the enrollment numbers before they offer this? What are the, what were the enrollment numbers after they offer the full-day K? So over the years. For example, like, let's say if there's a school district called X, they offer the all-day K maybe, say, 2013, right? So I want to say the number enrollment, the number of enrollment that, you know, was before 2013 and after 2013, over the years to today, after today.
We'll see if we can get that.
Yeah, thank you.
I think, just to clarify, I think, Michael, you're trying to get to see if the all-day K will improve the enrollment? Are you trying to get a understanding if we offer all-day K will improve the enrollment number?
Well, I look, I want to say that, you know, the enrollment, you know, change, because, you know, all-day K means that, you know, there's an execution rate, right? So I want to say, you know, how it was, how was it attractive to, you know, the enrollment,
This is, this might be just, you know, just small potatoes here, but is there a small offset from the foundation budget? Do we get like the minimum aid if we have additional 306 kids?
Yeah, like $9,740.
Right, which is why I said, yeah, to drop the bucket.
Wasn't enough to factor in. So we're in minimum aid. We get $30 per student right now. That means we get $15 for every kindergarten student because they're officially half-day students because the rest is tuition. So we would get another $15 times 300 kids.
Okay. And then the expectation for scholarship need, that, you said 22 students in one of your slides, for a total of about $88,000. Are you projecting that that will go up likely, or you just take that year by year?
If we went to free tuition?
No, I mean, that wouldn't be a thing at that point, but like, well, okay. Point taken. Yeah, okay. So I'll withdraw that. I was just thinking about.
No, it's good to, it's good to think through it, because that's not, yeah, spending that money is not factored into our numbers.
I'll try and be sort of quick. Would you agree with the statement that Massachusetts has a lot of educational regulations?
I plead the fifth.
Does Massachusetts require all-day kindergarten?
No.
Does Massachusetts require kindergarten attendance?
No.
Okay. I'll leave that as a thought problem. With respect to the budget, I'm just practicing in case those skills should ever be useful. The other comment that, well, I want to make two other comments. One is that when we're looking at soft values and what are things worth, you know, I want to highlight the point that has already been made, that the top two reasons children are in half-day is because I want to have the afternoon so my child can play, and I want to have the afternoon so my child can be with family. So as we weigh what we're doing, I certainly would want us to place a value on that time with family and that time at play. And then the last point is, you know, with respect to the presentation and the use of E and D. My view is that, you know, we could use E and D to offset anything in the budget. A million dollars' worth of special educators or pick anything else. And so that the decision about whether or not we want to use E and D as a revenue source in any budget year is a discussion with respect to the budget as a whole, not with respect to any individual activity. So I don't. So I don't think we should include that, you know, in this sort of analysis, that it should be presented as, you know, we're looking at foregoing a million dollars' worth of revenue, and we could do that all at once or over some number of years. And it's not more complicated than that. And of course, if we add a million dollars of expense to our budget, our budget will increase by a little bit more than 1%. And that's what people should see at us.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is the beginning of our new business, recommendation to approve the memorandum of understanding between ABRSD and Acton Community Access Television. We are asking for a vote, and Peter's going to talk to you a little bit about any of the changes or things about that.
So essentially, I believe this memorandum was last updated in 2011. So it's about time for that to be done. We worked with Acton TV. We're very grateful for their offer to fund the new equipment for the broadcast of the school committee meetings, which is taking place. We reviewed this. We actually sent it off to our attorney. Our attorney reviewed it, provided some comments back to Acton TV. Acton TV accepted all of the comments from our attorney, and so we're proposing this to you for, for approval.
Is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between ABRSD and Acton Community Access Television?
Move to approve the memorandum of understanding. I'm sorry.
All, all those in favor?
No, no, I did have to finish the whole thing.
Okay.
Wait.
I think she needs a second.
I need a second because I, move to approve the memorandum of understanding between ABRSD and Acton TV as proposed and authorized the ABRSC chairperson to sign the document.
Second.
Did you get that, Beth? I think, I think Adam did. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Item 5.1 is approval of our minutes from meetings on 9/5/19 and 9/9/19. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of those two meetings?
Zoom.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. The minutes are approved. There are a couple of FYIs. Oh, no, wait, sorry. FY19, I'm sorry. The year, and I'm reading it wrong, and I'm like, wait a minute, there's nothing for me to say here. Sorry. Sorry, Beth, I needed more notes. Item 5.2 is our fiscal year 19 year-end financial report. Thank you, Dave, for coming up. I almost gave you a free pass.
Thank you. So I gave a preliminary report on the end of the fiscal year back in August. You have a memo with your materials. I'm not intending to walk through that memo, but I can field questions on it certainly. Tonight, the presentation is intended to give highlights for fiscal 19. If I can, if I can put that here. Thank you. I know you like the post-it aspect. I'm not going to talk about when I was 17, but I will give some data to show for Acton-Boxborough in FY19. Financially, it was a good year. This is, this pie chart shows sources of variance in revenues. So the difference between the budget and the actual, you won't see the assessment up there because we collect everything that, that is assessed to the two towns, which makes up 81% of the revenue. Chapter 70, Chapter 70 and Transportation is about 18 and 1/2%. And you can see that, that we had some significant variances in those categories. The rest, Investment Income Medicaid is what mostly comprises other, that's only, that's less than 1/2 of a percent of the total revenue budget, but it was over half of the positive variance to, to the budget at the end of the year. So on about $88 million of budgeted revenue, we had a positive variance of $772,000 or just under 1%. We conservatively budget, I meant to say about other revenue, we continue to conservatively budget those amounts. In FY20, we've increased the budget collectively from $250,000 to $400,000 for those two items. So we're, I, I call it chasing those, those figures. We're getting closer. The good news is if we use them to set the budget, it's a, it becomes a source and it makes funding the budget easier. The, the offsetting news, if you will, is if we budget conservatively, we end up having a variance at the end of the year, which can go into E and D. Charts didn't work because of the scope of the variances. So here are the major variances by category. These are explained in more depth than the memo, so I won't go into them here. Just let you take a quick peek at them. Overall, the year ended within 1/2 of 1% of the total budget. It sounds like an okay result. But remember, as I said in page one, as I said in the first paragraph of the conclusion of the memo, the last page, the variance of $473,000, oh, I get to use this, the variance of $473,000, 1/2 of a percent, is after we put $1 million into capital stabilization. It's net of $275,000 of prepaying early retirement liability, and it's net of $481,000 worth of circuit breaker reserve that was budgeted in FY19 but not used. So we had a significant amount of what's called turnbacks in the, on the expense side in FY19. And it continued a trend, I don't have this, you have this in the memo, but it continues a trend of increasing turnbacks on the expense side since full regionalization. So I mentioned circuit breaker a few seconds ago. This graph, I believe you got this on, on August 6th, it shows how we've increased circuit breaker reserve. We're nearly to the max. Once, once the yellow bar, yellow section of the bar disappears, that's it. We can't keep anything more than one year's worth of circuit breaker on hand. You have to spend it within one year. In my view, the optimum strategy would be to hold all of the circuit breaker received in the, in that year and use that in its entirety to fund the following year's budget. It provides a high degree of certainty in, in budgeting the use of what otherwise could be a volatile source of funds. You saw this one in August as well. We've shown this, we've shown this consistently during budget presentations. Note that, this, and this is E and D growth. You see the dollar levels are shown vertically, and then I've put the percentages in, and you see we've, we've come close to the cap of 5%. We've not exceeded it. We have, we appear to be, the asterisk means it's not certified yet, but we appear to be within the target set by the, by the new policy. There was a question at the Budget Subcommittee. Does, does this trend comport with how things were before full regionalization? So I added a slide that's not in your material and went back as far as 2010. And you can see the trough there, and Marie was saying, well, well, it's down because the denominator increased greatly, and that happened in this year. But the trend was established for a couple of years, a downward trend in the district's E and D as a percentage. There's no dollars in this chart, it's just percentages. And so we're back now in the territory of where, I can't speak to, before 2010, just looking at the data here, we're back into territory about where we were in that period of time. And we didn't rehearse this. Marie, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that about from a historical basis?
Historically, we would have been between 4, 4 and 1/2%, which is the school committee's target policy now. So before 2010, I'm saying, we would have consistently stayed around 4%, 4 and 1/2%.
Right, okay. And last slide, again, you saw this in August. As I said in the conclusion to my memo, a future budget strategy is likely to anticipate annual turnbacks as we get close to the ceiling, the 5% ceiling. We may anticipate the fact of annual turnbacks and build them, if they're over 5%, build them into subsequent budgets. There's, there, the alternative would be to try and estimate the, the amount of actual spending so precisely that you run the risk of, of not sufficiently budgeting that year's operations. I may have, I may have been a little bit confusing and all that, but, whoops. Haven't gotten used to the pointer yet. The, the increase is clear for, for the last couple of years in how much E and D reserve has been used, and not suggesting that the amount is going to go like this, but certainly if we continue to have a million-dollar or so turnbacks in expenses, which is roughly 1%, it's not far-fetched to think that that's a good, a good ending place for the, for the year's expenses. We may have to plan on utilizing what otherwise would be in excess of the cap for the following year's budget purposes. And there's a year lag. It's not like the, anything over 5% needs to, we need to send a check back that year. It needs to be returned in the following year's budget. So with that, if there are any questions? It was nine pages, sorry. I'm prepared to do that.
I gave Dave a little bit of a hard time about how science is sometimes projected. I'm a little sensitive to that subject, you know, so anytime the word "science" appears, we have to make sure that it's appropriately contextualized.
So this, this presentation is a brief update about the Capital Improvement Project, the CIPC funding, not the projects, not how the projects are coming along, but the funding of it, because things have, things have changed. Bond interest rates are at historic lows. We've got evidence presented to us recently that a neighboring town issued a 10-year bond at just over 1% and 1/2%. We had in our models that, that put together the, the CIP plan, we assumed that the bonds would be sold at 3.75%, and we'd have short-term borrowing for the first couple of years at 2 and 1/4%. Now what we're thinking, especially based on information that's, that's very recent, that we could do this for about 2%. If we could do the bonds at 2%, it changes things drastically. We met with our financial advisor earlier this week, and they suggested that should the, should the new school project pass and bonds be, and we're going to get to that later, bonds be issued for that project, that these bonds be incorporated to save on the issue costs. There are legal and, and other costs associated with the issuance of bonds. That could, that could save us some money. The upshot is that if we issue them in calendar 2020, so February to March 2020, the first principal payment would begin in next fiscal year, so earlier than the original plan. We'd be taking advantage of lower interest rates and bonding it sooner, coincident with the new school. And so repayment would, would have to start one year sooner. So what does that mean? I rewrote in the spreadsheet and assumed that the bond would be issued the second half of this fiscal year, the beginning of calendar year 2020, and the interest rate at 2%, not 3 and 3/4%. And there's some significant differences. It's not, it's not in the millions, but for about the same amount of project, so from 22.5, 22.5 and 22.5, it's basically roundings that results in this difference, the district would save almost half a million dollars in appropriation to get that same amount of capital projects. What's the difference? The difference is $525,000 in interest saved by doing it. Should we, but Dave, should we just go with the same plan and short-term borrow, and the short-term rate is typically the same or less than the, the bond rate? The risk is that because the rates are at such a historical low, that if we wait as long as two years out, they could significantly change, we've, we've seen what a model with a 3 and 3/4% interest rate looks like. It's a half a million dollars more interest than this. So the, so the, the recommendation of the financial advisors is to, is to pursue this more quickly. And more, more to come on that, more to come on that because the, we're not, we're not ready to do it now, but this was just an FYI, a heads up, if you will, that, that we've, we've got some new information about the funding.
Thank you, Dave. And just, you know, there's one implication of that, moving the bonding up early on the capital funding. If you remember when we presented that plan to you, in the early years of the plan, we were only paying interest on short-term notes. So there was more cash available for projects. If we move the bonding up, we're going to be paying the larger amounts of interest in the earlier years of the plan. So what, there's two options, I think, that Dave and I have talked about, that are both viable options. Either shift a few priorities in the plan out one year, or we actually now have a capital stabilization fund that's funded. We could actually offset what we wouldn't have been able to use in the early years of the project with money from the capital stabilization fund, because the bottom line is, over the life of this plan, we'll actually end up a half a million dollars to the good by going out early. So, you know, regardless of whether or not we shift a project out a year or we fund out a capital stabilization, we're still end up saving half a million dollars, which is either half a million dollars more projects or we're getting out ahead of this earlier.
That's correct. And using the capital stabilization versus pushing a project out would just be a cash flow issue. We'd, we'd still be spending the same amount unless we made a material change in the plan. And I'm glad you remembered to make that point. Thank you.
Item 5.4 is a school building committee update. Adam?
So the school building committee hasn't met since your presentation two weeks ago from Larry from Arrow Street. I would just point out that in your packet, there is a revised flyer talking about the status of our project and some upcoming events. Monday, November 4th, there'll be a tour of Douglas at 6:30, followed by a forum. Thursday, November 14th, there'll be a forum in Boxborough with the location to be determined. Monday, December 6th, another tour of Douglas. If, if anyone on this committee or any member of the community has not had the opportunity to see the, the state of that facility, it's a, it's a real, it's a real great way to sort of give you a kick in the pants to, to, to see what the, what's happening there. And then also a reminder that December 10th, special town meetings in both Acton and Boxborough for the vote on the funding of the school building project.
All right. Item 5.5.1 is debt strategy. John?
So we had a meeting of the Debt Strategy Subcommittee to finalize parameters for the purpose of presenting the expected costs of bonding the new school earlier this week. And in the packet, Dave has written an excellent memorandum which summarizes that discussion. There are a few numbers that everybody should be aware of. One is, you know, and this relates to the discussion that Dave just presented with respect to bonding the Kern projects. to bonding the Kern projects, is that interest rates are low. And relative to some of the historical values that were used in estimating what the impact would be on single-family properties, what the Debt Subcommittee decided is that we should recommend, that we should protect the cost of the bond based on a 3% interest rate. That's actually a little bit higher than things are right now, but we wanted something that had more upside risk and less downside risk in it. So that's why the 3% number was selected. The other thing, again aligned with what Dave said, is that there's no appetite for short-term borrowing. If interest rates are good, you should borrow right away, and so that's what we're going to do. There was a discussion of level principal versus level payments. A level payment is what most people have on their mortgage. And because that, you know, gives an equal payment over time, it was decided that that was the best way to present this to the community. So we have a level payment. The last parameter that needs to be discussed is what should the length of the debt be? And so we considered terms from 20 to 30 years because of the low interest rates. Essentially, if interest rates were zero, this is an easy decision. You just go for the longest term. So the closer you are to zero, the farther out you go. And at the end of that discussion, we said, "Well, maybe we could do 25." But again, for the purpose of the, what is the base case? It's the 30-year debt. And so for people who are looking for those impact on single-family homes, in Acton, if the assessed value was $590,000, then on a 30-year bond, the payment would be $442 per year. On a 25-year bond, that would be $498 per year. Again, based on the assumptions about how the bond is divided between Acton and Boxborough, Boxborough with an average assessed value of $610,000, that home would be, see a tax bill increase of $307 if we issued the debt for 30 years, or $346 if the debt was issued for 25 years. So those are the numbers that we should be sharing with people about how to think about this. Also explained very nicely in Dave's memo is the fact that the bond issuance is actually controlled by the Treasurer of the District. So she, obviously Margaret, has participated in all these discussions and understands the logic which drove us to make the decisions that we have made here. And I think, just like what David just presented, you know, if we came to that point, you know, in, at the beginning of the year and everything looked different, we would revisit what our plan was in light of actual conditions. But for the moment, this is what we're going to do. And if anything should change, you know, we would come back and look at what the situation would be. Are there any questions?
I will. And without repeating John, I just want to call attention to a couple of slides on this. And I just checked with Beth, the entire presentation, which was about eight slides, will be in the packet and you can look at it. These were the assumptions that the Subcommittee went by. And again, it's in the memo. I just wanted to point out that in the memo, I talk about these things being outside the control of the district. John suggested to me, not in time, my doing, to make a change in the memo, to, should have been outside the purview of the Subcommittee. The cost of the building, for example, is within the scope of the Building Committee in the design phase, et cetera. So these are the assumptions that we used in arriving at the recommendation, which is here. And this is a pretty good visual. So I didn't want to interrupt John as he was saying the numbers, presumably for the first time for a lot of people. But here is the graphic that shows the range to the typical Acton and Boxborough taxpayer incrementally from the addition of this new debt. The yellow bands would be on a 25-year bond, the light blue bands if the bonds were 30 years. And also, the Subcommittee asked me to make sure that we explained what happens if the rate changes, because as you saw from my previous presentation, the interest rate makes a difference. If the interest changes a quarter of a percent, the difference is $14 and $10 respectively per year. It adds up to a lot of money. Adam asked me, "What would the interest cost be in the aggregate of not short-term borrowing and in percentage rate?" And it's about $10 million over the course of a long-term bond issuance. But to an individual taxpayer, it's $14 and $10 for every quarter of percent variance.
I still want to add one thing is that if we're talking about, you know, the difference between 25-year bond and 30-year bond. So we show the, you know, the per-family, I mean, based on the average, you know, violation of the single-family house. I would suggest that we also show, you know, 25 years. If we choose 25 years, then how much we are saving versus 30-years bond, so. I mean, in the total. I mean, not per-family, but in the total.
The total, the grand total to be financed by the district over 25 years?
How much interest we are saving, we're going to save between 25 years versus 30 years bond, so.
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Oh, yeah. That's what I'm suggesting to add that as well. Thank you.
Understand that that number, Michael, today, doesn't mean what it will be 25 years from now. The cost of paying back this debt 25 years from now, or 28, 29, 30 years from now, will be easier, will be easier borne at that time because of the time value of money than it would be now. So if you look at it and you say, "Hey, even the number I just gave, $10 million," that's real money if the interest rate changes. But if the debt, if the term of the debt changes, you're not paying any different over the life of those bonds in today's dollars by definition. That's what the present, the present value of those future cash flows is what you're committing to today. How long you pay it back, that's what, you can pay more money. If you were legally allowed to do it over 50 years, you would pay more interest. And in today's, looking at it today, you say, "Well, there's a lot more interest." But in 50 years from now, that little bit of interest wouldn't mean as much as it does today. But we can still find out the answer to your question.
You know, I'd like to thank the Subcommittee for their effort in presenting this information. It's really helpful. And I would, looking at this slide, encourage you then to also look at what we put for our estimates. And I noticed that Dave used estimates many times in this presentation. But our estimates in terms of the tax impact for both Acton and Boxborough families for the new school building, these are very much on the low side of what our estimates were. So, you know, I think that, you know, while there has been some concern around our reimbursement rate and our costs for the building, we do have this opportunity here to take advantage of some of the debt strategy to help alleviate maybe that lower-than-desired reimbursement rate. So I think that this is a great opportunity to sort of balance those two out.
So we had an ALG meeting earlier today, and someone actually asked us a question about why are the estimates so much lower than what was originally projected? And I, really, it boils down to two key driving factors. Dave's given me a three, so I'll let him say the third. But I think it's really two factors. One, the interest rates are a lot lower now than they were when we started this process. Two, the actual cost of the building is $2.5 million below the lowest threshold of the range that we had estimated. So we had estimated between $120 and $130 million. So the high end of those estimates were built out to that number. And then in all honesty, in some of the financial models, and this may be the third, we were estimating as little as 20 years on the repayment process of the debt. So the cost to taxpayers goes up the shorter you are. Dave, you have a fourth?
And initially, when we came up with the first set of models, we built in that we would pay an equal amount of principal every year and that payments would decline over the life of the bond. What the Subcommittee, as John said, opted to recommend was level payments, and that slices off the top, the top peak of the repayment schedule. And that was another significant factor.
And it's, I think what happened is it's one of those things that early in the building project, when we had hired our project manager, they kept saying to us, and I remember the Building Committee meetings, "It's too early. We can't give you cost estimates right now. It's just too early. Things have to play out. It takes time." And I remember the discussion and some Building Committee members saying, "We have to present our community cost estimates." So, you know, when we did cost estimating, we clearly took a conservative path to that because we wanted to make sure we didn't underestimate the impact. And so now that we have real numbers, we're seeing those come down.
A couple of things. One is, I wanted to thank Adam for his kind words for the Debt Subcommittee. And I wanted to make the point that I also made with respect to the Building Subcommittee, that the work of the Debt Subcommittee, you know, is a function of Finance Committee members from Acton, Finance Committees from Boxborough, School Committee members from both towns, as well as staff and bond advisors. So it is actually a diversified group trying to come to and answer the question. And then I think the second thing, you know, that's important that comes out of this is that whenever you do anything like this, you have to make assumptions. And as long as those assumptions are clearly stated, then you'll be able to do what Peter just did, which is said, "Originally, we made the following assumptions for these reasons. And then as we went through, we learned what better assumptions would look like, and we changed them, and that's the consequence." That's the height of transparency. That is what we should always be looking to do, because there's no problem with things change. Things will change, but they need to change for a reason, and in this case, they have.
Dan, you want to update us on budget?
Yep. So this school committee meeting made my job really easy tonight. The Budget Sub met Tuesday, this past Tuesday. We discussed an update to the charge of the committee. The Subcommittee came into being right after regionalization, and its first charge voted by the School Committee wasn't until 2000, I believe, it was like 2017 or something. So we've updated it, and we're going to bring it to the Full School Committee in October for a vote. And we also discussed a proposed schedule for the FY '21 budget process. That's under development right now, and we will also be bringing that to you in October to look at and to vote on. Having said that, we've already kind of begun deliberating this evening on all-day kindergarten, which will be a component of that budget. So it's, you know, we've already started that process even without a proposed schedule. Dave also previewed his FY 2019 memo, which was in your packet tonight, so I won't give any details about that. And we got a budget update for FY '20. So do you want to speak to the, yeah, what's going on with FY '20?
You know, FY '20 update is really, we're very much according to plan. The one area where we have seen, and we updated Budget Sub the other day, is we had a number of students move in, particularly at Miriam and McCarthy Town, who had services through individual education plans that, both in terms of the number of students who moved in and the services that they required, caused a couple of our programs in those buildings to have more students than we should be running in that type of a program. So we've been evaluating the staffing levels. And when I say students moving in, I think we added like eight or nine students at those schools who had some significant needs. So we've been evaluating staffing levels. We know that we're actually operating under budget in the personnel budget so far, based on hiring, you know, the full staff that we proposed. So we are going to need to make sure that we add special education staff at those schools in those programs. It's just, it's a critical need. We know that we, based on the projections we have, we actually will still end up to the good on our personnel budget for the year, even adding those positions, because we were under budget for our original staffing projections. In the very worst-case scenario, if something happened, that's a very appropriate use of circuit breaker funds to be able to look at. So just wanted to give you that one update and make sure that you knew what we were doing with that.
Angie, did you have an update about Minuteman Tech?
No.
We haven't met yet. Okay. All right. The ALG update? Yeah, could you?
So ALG met this morning, and we discussed pretty much everything that we discussed here tonight. So again, this is very easy. So FY '20 update, FY '21 revenue projections, school building update. The only other piece that we didn't talk about today was the, we discussed at the meeting the North Acton Fire Station. And they're on point to have that, to present that at the special town meeting in December. The, we did take a look, we did get to see the draft of the warrant articles going out, just very preliminary draft. And the School Building Committee, school building project will be first on the warrant list, which I was very happy to see. That's, that was pretty much it, other than what we all heard tonight.
Thanks. All right. BLF met for the first time this year on September 10th, and much of what was, some of what was discussed tonight was really, it was, Maria was able to give, Maria and Gary were able to give a pretty extensive update on what the School Building Committee has been doing and to kind of fill other members in on what all of that was about, because there was a little bit of just confusion about how funding works and how we fund the students in Boxborough and just understanding school budgets and how those impact individual taxpayers. So I believe our next meeting is not until October, so, mid-October. But the warrant closes on 10/21, and there's nothing major in Boxborough either. Did I get everything, Gary? All right. There are three warrants on the agenda now being circulated. Vendor warrants 20-006 and 20-006 PR in the total amount of $1,601,617.89. And payroll warrant P2006 in the total amount of $2,559,375.06. There are some FYIs in your packet. And I think, is there anything that you wanted to speak to in there? You already spoke to the coffees, right?
Yeah, I think we're done.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? Oh. Yep.
I have one FYI that came in today from our state, or part of Acton, State Representative Tammy Guevea. And she wanted me to make sure everyone is aware that the Ed reform bill is out. And she, I can send you a link. I think she may have sent it to the committee, but I'll send you a link if you don't, if she didn't. And would love to have your thoughts on it, just feedback.
Great. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right. We're adjourned. Thank you.
No, no opposed.